Three, two, one.
Good evening, everybody. It is December eleventh. This is our school committee meeting and we start each meeting reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools strives to be a model district that creates a culture of inclusivity for our diverse students and staff who feel safe and supported, are empowered with the academic and social emotional skills to pursue their chosen path, and embrace their roles as positive contributors to local and global communities. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Our order of business this evening is our call to order, agenda review and adoption, public participation. The reports and presentations will include our student presentations with the school committee Student Advisory Council, CARES, Ms. St. Kerr from Ashland High School, Unified Basketball, Josh Sanford, Field Trip Proposal, Greece, April twenty twenty six, Mr. McGann, ELE Report, Kristi Arnold, Warrant Approvals, Superintendent's Report, Assistant Superintendent's Report. Our action items and discussion updates and votes include Chesterton Academy of the Immaculata Catholic School Proposal in Ashland, Approval of Policies, including JJFR, JJF dash R Athletic Concussion Regulations, AD Vision and Mission Statement, EBCFA Face Coverings, DJ Purchasing. First read of Policies includes DJA Purchasing Authority, DJE Bidding Requirements, BHE Use of Electronic Messaging by School Committee Members. The Consent Agenda includes Approval of Gifts and Donations, Grant Approval, Minutes from November third, twenty twenty four. And then we will move to enter Reports of School Committee Members, and then we will move to enter into Executive Session under MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A two, To Conduct Strategy Sessions in Preparation for Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel, Superintendent Jim Adams, Or To Conduct Collective Bargaining With the Intent of Not Returning to Public Session, and Then We Will Adjourn. Okay, I'm just gonna take attendance and ask if everybody is okay with the order of business this evening. Marcy?
Here, yes.
Tina?
Here, yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, first I'm gonna ask if there's anybody from the public, either online or in the room, who would like to offer public comment. And seeing none, I will move on to our Student Advisory Council Presentation. You guys are welcome to come on up to the podium and introduce yourselves and fill us in on what's going on. Hello?
Hi, I'm Sophia Wornetski and I'm in tenth grade. Um, so, a couple of updates. So, we recently participated in the Alice Drill, which is like practicing barricading classrooms in case of a lockdown. And, um, however, some students didn't take this situation like completely seriously because they knew about it ahead of time, although it was definitely good overall practice since some people like had never like learned how to like barricade their classrooms before. Um, there's also the NHS Induction Ceremony recently, where sixty-three students were inducted into the National Honor Society, bringing the club participation total up to like above ninety. And, um, so also, the honors band and chorus participated in the senior districts music competition. Um, and twelve band members and five chorus members qualified. And first fall sports, um, so there's a lot of successful teams. So, both girls and boys cross-country made it to All States for the first time in history. Um, girls volleyball made it to the final eight, boy soccer made it to the Sweet Sixteen, and both girls soccer and girls field hockey made it to the playoffs as well. And we had twenty-three total league all star, or twenty-four league all-stars. And, um, also, Mr. Anderson made all of the sports banners in the gym like a uniform design, and he purchased, um, new record boards for swimming and track and field.
Awesome, thanks.
Alright, good evening, everyone. My name is Max MoGanbo and I'm a junior. So, right now, freshmen are beginning to plan their high school, uh, path in freshman seminar, and juniors are looking into colleges and career paths in their junior seminar. Um, it's an exciting time with lots of thoughtful planning in both grades. On another note, uh, I'd like to address the recent change in the French program. As you already know, it's being phased out, and I think it might be a little bit tough for the middle school students who are currently, um, taking French. It might be forced to switch over to Spanish. Um, I'd like to propose offering an alternative language, like something like Portuguese, which might be easier to staff, eh, considering like the finding French teachers is considerably hard. Um, and I'd also like to touch up on the upcoming winter break. Um, as you know, it's the longest it's been in years, and I think it's a positive change, considering most teachers are already wrapping up like all their units by, by the end of this week or the next week. And, um, so it doesn't really interrupt the flow of learning. And I feel like it's a good time for kids to come, to connect with their families. Yep, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you, that's very helpful input.
Hi, I'm Sonia Witasami and I'm a sophomore. Um, so for club fundraisers, there was the Red Cross, which had the blood drive, and we got a lot of per, or they got a lot of participants, um, from students as well as teachers. Also, Make-A-Wish hosted a Harlem Wizards fundraiser, which allowed, um, them to raise around seventeen thousand dollars, which allows them to grant almost two wishes, which is amazing. Um, also, right before Thanksgiving break, we all, we had a hallway decorating competition, and a lot of students came to help their class out, and, um, there were so many creative designs and effort put into each hallway. And, uh, yeah, the class twenty twenty-seven won, um, with their hallway of candy cane theme. Um, also, for college and military branch visitors, there were several college visits, um, that, that's been happening every week during X Block. Um, some upcoming meeting dates this week are upcoming is Monday on the sixteenth and Tuesday on the seventeenth. Um, a West Point cadet, who is a former graduate at Ashland, came to during X Block to, and held an info session about what he does and like, um, the program. Um, also, students have seen military branch visits during lunch, um, who set up tables and provides fi, fires for their program, which many students love to check out and participate in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Thanks, everybody. We appreciate that, all that great information, and you are free to go whenever you want to. Uh, Ms. St. Kerr?
The CARES?
On CARES?
You're gonna do both?
Oh, okay.
Beautiful.
Awesome.
I'm really not doing anything but introducing them, so, um, excited to, um, welcome our co-presidents for the CARES team, um, who are gonna talk to you a little bit tonight about what the CARES team does at Ashland High School. So they'll introduce themselves and, um, explain a little bit about what we do. Um, it's a unique group at Ashland High School in that it's not just a student club, it's actually a group of students and adults who meet together regularly. Um, so I'm gonna let these wonderful young ladies explain it to you.
Hello?
Hello, everyone. My name is Genesis Bukanya and I'm a senior, and I'm co-president of CARES with, together with.
I'm Sophia Silva and I'm a junior.
So, a bit about CARES, um, CARES stands for Cloakers for Anti-Racism, Equity and Social Justice. We attended the Connections Conference, and just this past year, we presented, and our topic was Empathy in Action, Programs to Cultivate Empathy From Childhood to Adulthood. There were fifty school, six schools in attendance and six hundred people. We also have the Flag Day that we do every year, but now we've changed it to every two years. It's a sixty-minute old-school assembly where students and staff sign up to represent a flag or country they feel are connection to you. And each flag representative shares a couple sentences, one or two about their connection, and the assembly begins and ends with a beautiful pageantry of flags. The CARES team also has a reading team, which is a team of twelve students who read picture books full of diverse characters and stories, and they lead, um, a class discussion with students at Peterway, Warren and Mendez. CARES is also responsible for the World Cup Mirror right at the front, and we paint, um, a mirror with like the word "World Cup" with, with twenty-eight languages that AHS students speak, and if any language that a student speaks isn't there, make sure to add it. And additionally, we are also responsible for the M. Martin Luther King Junior Court, like right by the front office. Thank you.
Okay, um, for CARES, we host, uh, movie and book discussions. And so our lineup for this year is, the first book is, this book is Anti-Racist by Tiffany Jewell. It's a book about how, with twenty lessons on how to wake up, take action and do the work. Next is a graphic novel Palestine by Joe Sacco, and it's a book that is a political and historical depiction of Palestine. For movies, we have On These Grounds. It's a documentary about police brutality. Then Viral Anti-Semitism in Four Mutations, and talking about how antisemitism is rising and worsening in the US and Europe in not, in ways not seen since nineteen thirties. This has already passed. We, I was co-facilitator for this, and it was a very good discussion. A lot was learned in the community. Um, next movie was On the Basis of Sex is a film based on the life and early cases of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And then the next movie is called The Disruptors. It's a documentary about now neurodivergence and ADHD. Um, in light of recent, of the recent swastika found in the boys bathroom, we are offering a X Block entitled Anti-Semitism, the swastika and AHS, and it's a way to create a sa, safe space for education and dialogue about the, what hap, has happened. We are having a short video on the history of antisemitism and questions about the video and how people feel with the swastika in, that was found. Yeah. Also, for any of the book discussions, anybody, part of the community, it's free for the entire community to join. We would love to see people there just to come participate and discuss with students and faculty.
Does it happen at the high school?
No, on Zoom.
Online, okay.
It's usually in the evenings for movie discussion. It is one, um, one, um, one hour and thirty-minute discussion, but for books, we have like every other week, no, every week, we have like a Wednesday meeting, for example.
And like, how do we find out more about the schedule? Like, if someone wants to join the Zoom?
I think there, like, the information is on the, the Ashland website, but if not, um, we can contact Ms. St. Kerr or Ms. Nameth, um, at the high school.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work, thanks. Ms. St. Kerr, again?
Hi again. Um, at this time, I'm gonna invite up the coach and one member of our team, Unified Basketball Team, who are gonna talk to you a little bit about their season, um, this year and their very special award.
Hello?
Hi. Okay. Hi, my name is Ethan Ritterbush. I am the, this year I was the coach of the Unified Basketball Team. I'm taking over Holly LeBlanc, who was the coach last year. This is Noah George. He was a student on the team. Um, Noah has a little statement he would like to read, and then I'm going to present you guys a sportsmanship award we won this year, and then talk a little bit about the, for, does that sound okay?
Fabulous.
Cool.
Thank you. Hello?
Hi, guys. Hello, everyone. My name is Noah George. I am a senior at Ashland High School. The Infed Sports has been a a blessing in my life. I am lucky to have this program at our school. I am representing my coach and my teammates. I have loved playing basketball and track at Ashland High School for three years now. Sports make me a better person in life. We hope to see you come to support some of our games in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, Noah. So, um, this is a sportsmanship award that we were awarded at the end of this year, um, that we won, and congratulations to Noah and our players who helped win it.
So exciting.
Yes, we were nominated for the award by the town of Hopkinton. Um, if you wanna learn more, if you wanna see more from our game against them, there was a Metro West Daily News article about it, um, that you could look up. Um, the program is a very good program. You know, this is my first year coaching and being involved with whatever what I've seen. It's great. You know, beyond just, uh, giving an opportunity for people, um, because we, it's a, Unified Sports is a way for people, uh, students with special needs to participate and play with students who don't. So it's a very, it's a very inclusive sport, and beyond just, you know, being useful, because some of our students don't have a lot of opportunities to be physically active, um, beyond being a boon to the community in that degree. Um, it's also just the culture is great, you know, it's not, you know, super competitive, you know, as, you know, um, and I think that, uh, it's a, it's a good league, and I enjoyed my time with it, and I think a lot of our students enjoyed our time. At least, that's what I heard from them. Do you guys have any questions, or?
Well done.
Yeah. That is great. What an honor to be nominated by another community, so they're not, you're being noticed. So, great work. Thanks for all you do, and have fun.
Thank you guys for recognizing us.
Thank you.
Okay. Follow that, Mr. McGann.
I don't think you can.
Very proud counselor right now, because Noah's one of my guys.
Ah.
Um, uh, hello, everyone. Corey McGann, uh, school counselor at the high school. Um, I, uh, doing a, a trip to Europe, uh, for April twenty twenty-six. Um, this is Athens, uh, Greece and the islands, Greek islands. I did not know that they were making a sequel to Gladiator when I pitched this. But we, the kids will be seeing the Colosseum, um, so that's good. Um, yeah, uh, typical ten-day trip, um, avoiding, uh, missing school like the plague as best as I can. Um, and, uh, it's gonna be about, uh, four days in Athens and then, uh, visiting the surrounding islands.
Questions?
How many kids do you typically expect to get on a trip like this?
It's a good question. Um, I, I don't like to take too many, um, for a variety of reasons. Um, so thirty-six to forty is my, sometimes forty-four. Um, and my communication to EF is I wanna stay on one bus, and their communication to me is we will get you a bigger bus. Because they're trying to, uh,
EF is the travel agency.
EF is the travel.
That you've used for other trips, right?
Correct.
That you've worked with in the past?
Since I've been in fifth grade. I mean, I've, this is, other than Coca-Cola, this organization has been in my life more than any other.
Yeah.
They are the gold standard. They are the best. They are worldwide, and I know that when I'm in, when I'm on tour, there is a hotline number that if I need anything, um, it's, it's immediate. And, um, there's been a couple situations where I've needed to utilize them, and it's amazing how responsive, responsive they are. So that's what I love about EF the most. They are the best.
Paul?
Uh, so I know over the last couple of years, you've been trying to really improve the front end of this and, and the sign up and
Yep.
the communication. Can you maybe talk a little bit more about
Yeah, yeah.
changes and how that's evolved?
Yep, I actually, the, the last, uh, um, when I, uh, sought approval for the last trip that's leaving, uh, in April, I did implement the change of, um, staggering the sign, sign-ups, not just based on year, but also for students who have toured before, not, I'm planning on doing it the same way, where, um, we have the information session, and then a week for rising seniors who have never traveled before. Then a week for rising juniors who have never, rising sophomores that have never traveled before. And then looping back around, rising seniors who have had the opportunity, rising juniors, and then to make sure that there's the opportunity that if you want a spot and you've never been able to do it, and favoring the upperclassmen, because for a, a rising sophomore, they're gonna have two other bites of the apple.
Other questions?
And piggyback that with Paul's typical question in terms of the, the efforts to make sure that students and families are aware of, you know, if, obviously, these trips are not cheap.
Yes.
So, you know, kind of the efforts to make sure that they're as inclusive as possible for all students.
So I make sure to put that in the, uh, announcement about the information session, and then I, I talk about it at the information session as well, and then have one-on-one conversations with anyone that, that seeks me out.
Do you, do you have, I, because I, I haven't gone through, because McKenna will be, uh, in, in this next trip, but, uh, I know, we're trying to do this, but you are going through EF, and they have a process which involves some upfront you know, funds and the commitment and, and everything like that. So have you, have you talked to them about how to soften that for anyone that might be in that situation? Because it's still their process, and at the onset, when you sign up, they're like, I need this much money and I need a commitment to draw down on some account.
Right, right.
And these payments right up front, whereas if we're trying to help somebody, that might be
Yeah.
a bit of a challenge, right?
The sense, I, I've never had specific conversations about what a family would need in that moment. The sense I get is that they're flexible, especially since compared to most schools, I, I do it much earlier, um, because I give it, I don't do it, typically for an April trip, most schools will, that, they'll introduce it that September, um, within that academic school year. I always do it the year before to give plenty of time. It does two things. One, it lowers the, the monthly payment for everyone, but I anticipate that if I went to EF or the family went directly to EF to say, can we not front-end it as much? Um, there's a way to do it, especially if you don't do the automatic payment plan, you just do manual. Um, the, just to hold your spot is ninety-five dollars, but that's fully refundable, uh, if you choose not to go. Um, uh, but the sense I get is that they would be flexible for individual students.
So maybe just think about how you would work with a family, because even though that, that's what they're taking at that time, I know when they sign up, you're a commit, you're also signing up for that draw, right?
Only if you do automatic payment. If you do manual payment, you don't have to pay anything, um, up, upfront, other than the ninety-five dollar deposit.
Other questions? Now, some of us have chaperoned with you before.
Yes.
Mr. McGann's an excellent chaperone.
Yes. It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work. Can confirm.
Quite sleep right the whole time.
But, uh, but I know that's something that, uh, parents who might not know you, uh, or know what your experience is, might want to know, that, uh, some of us up here can vouch for you, including me.
I appreciate that.
Can, I just wanna ask some more, just about managing international travel and safety for kids, right? And, uh, you know, just kinda come back to that. What, what are we able to do to as much as you can for anybody who's traveling internationally or anywhere?
Yeah.
And what, what are we doing to make sure we, we keep track of the safety of our kids and chaperones like yourself?
It's a great question. So that's, by the way, that's number one reason why I go through EF, because they just have people everywhere. Um, and so if anything happened, it's so quick for them to get, um, staff with us. We are, so EF provides us with, um, a, a tour director who is with us literally twenty-four seven for all ten days. So they are not with their families, they're not with anyone, they're just with us, they're in our hotels, everything. Um, so I always have They're in our hotels, everything. Um, so I always have someone who knows the area um immediately as well as the hotline that I can use at any point, anywhere I, I'm in the world. I don't let the kids by themselves. Um, they're always, if they do have free time and they're always in a, 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 a specific area that's safe, um, and they're always traveling in uh minimums of threes. And the ability, we use the WhatsApp uh app to be able to communicate so they can text me uh immediately. I've also given out my, my cell on tour and I tell them as soon as we land, you are not allowed to text me. You're calling me. Um, but in the moment, I want them to be able to like get to someone quickly. The other thing that I do that I think um is really effective is um I always break the um, the large group into uh what I call grupitos, um, just small groups and each chaperone has their group of five, six, seven kids. And they really get to know that group of five, six, seven kids. So they always have the ability to contact their grupito leader as well as me in case anything is happening. So we've been very lucky um that we've been very safe. I, I should also say like, I definitely pick the trips based on safety. Um, there's a reason why, you know, I, I generally pick, you know, major cities which have a lot of tourists. Um, EF is comfortable traveling there. I, I wouldn't travel to places that are a little bit off the beaten path. I, I wouldn't feel comfortable myself doing that. Um, I, I, I like, I like tourist traps. There's, um, it's great for the kids because they get that sort of experience of uh someplace where it, for them, it's totally different. But it, but the city itself gets tourists all the time um and specifically American tourists. So it, I feel much more comfortable in that regard.
Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have a motion?
I have it up, but I, I move to approve the uh international trip as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll just say, Corey, I appreciate you coming in a year and a half early for these things.
Agreed.
Yeah, it's a smart move.
Yeah, if we, if we got stuck on something, it gives you plenty of time to kind of come back and, and provide more info. So I think we've gotten better at that over the years and I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Yeah, it gives a lot of flexibility for me, certainly for me, the families, um, just us as a school, just that it's, nothing is, basically I'm just waiting for things. Nothing is last minute. I'm a super, especially when I'm on tour, I've got my three-ring binder. I've got all like, I'm, I'm super uh fixated on making sure that everything goes really smoothly.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming in in person to do something that is at this point with us almost pro forma. It's a, it's a, you might change up the, the, you know, the cities, but it's the same trip every year, but you're, you're still here and, and, and representing it. So.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'll, I'll keep it short, but I'm really proud of it. I think it's a really good thing and kids come away from it with just uh experience of culture and language and just also as a school counselor, like I think learning how to travel and do so effectively and be able to kind of go with the flow, which you definitely need to do with a group of fifty people. Um, it, they, they learn things that they take back to their families or, or, and a lot of kids will tell me that they did study abroad when they're in college. One of my former AHS travelers now lives in Germany. Um, so it's a, it's, I, I'd like to think that they had that early experience and then off they went. So.
You sure you don't want to take two hundred down to DC?
Thank you, but. But I, I, well, the important thing, like I, for me personally, I do know my limits as a counselor. I would never want to put myself in a situation where I'm not feeling like it can go really well and I think that's a smart thing to do. So, yeah.
Thank you.
I went on this trip, um, my God, was it last year?
Yeah.
And um.
London, Paris, Madrid, LPM.
Yeah, and it was one of the best trips I've ever been on in my life. So I just like to thank you for running this every year and kind of bummed that I'm on the bottom of the list because I'm.
You never know, man. You never know.
We'll see, but.
But what I liked about your grupito is you, correct me if I'm wrong, but when you guys went off to your lunches, I don't think you ever went to any of the chain restaurants. You went to the local spots every time.
We went to one. We went to Nando's.
Oh dude.
But.
But that's local to London. Okay, that's good.
But uh, the immersion is amazing. We went to, I mean, I can speak French. Maximo is fluent. You just met Maxi. He's fluent in Spanish and um it, it was just an amazing trip.
So you were speaking to everyone in, in their native language?
Yeah, it was great.
That's awesome.
That's nice to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, have a good one. Okay, Christie.
My son was on the trip last year as well and had a blast.
Good.
Same.
Yeah.
All right.
Are you Noah, Noah Arnold's son?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I am. Yep. Um, so I'm Christie Arnold, Director for English Language Education. Thanks for having me here tonight. I put together a few slides just to go over um some of the numbers currently in the program, looking at some of the data uh for progress of our English learners as well as um, and as I go over some of the progress, some of the reasons why I think we have progress in the places that we do. Was it ding?
Yeah.
I was like, what do I say?
Yeah, your heart wasn't in that ding. Come on.
I'll try, but I'll try harder for the next slide. Okay. So um, so currently, so the numbers that you see here, um, just to distinguish between a multilingual learner and an English learner. Multilingual learners are um kids that have or either speak fluently another language, maybe their parents speak it, maybe they're exposed to it in their home. Not all multilingual learners are English learners because they could be bilingual, emergent bilingual, uh trilingual. Actually, we have some families that speak multiple languages at home because they've traveled, they've lived in multiple countries. Um, so currently we have nine hundred and twenty-six multilingual learners, meaning they've listed a language other than English as their primary language at home. Um, so out of that nine twenty-six, two hundred and twenty-five would be identified as English learners, meaning not fluent in English yet. So somewhere between newcomer and maybe a level three, four, meaning almost proficient in English. Like you might be able to have a conversation with them, but they need a little more support with academic language. So English learners is a wide range. Um, and then former English learners, we currently have a hundred and forty-seven. Those are students that were in the English Language Education Program, but met the exit criteria, meaning they're proficient in English and could perform classwork in English without any support. We monitor those students for four years after they've exited. So that's the number of those students who are within that four-year period. There are more kids that have exited, but they're past that four years. So we don't keep count of those anymore. So then in the next section where it says English learners, I just broke down the numbers by school. Um, so at the, so we've had increases at the high school in Warren this year. The middle school, we had a small decrease. Mendez and uh Pittaway were about the same. And also our total number of multilingual learners was actually the exact same as last year, nine twenty-six. So new students coming in, old students, it stayed the same.
In frame of reference, the nine twenty-six is about a third of our student population.
That's really striking me just listening to like.
Thank you, because I don't do well percentage. Um, any questions about any of those numbers? Because we'll just keep moving forward. Ding.
Thank you.
So then this slide just um highlights the various languages that are spoken um in Ashland. Portuguese being the, the highest after English. Um, and then Indian languages and dialects, I put those together. Um, and then Spanish, Russian, Arabic, Chinese, which incorporates Mandarin and Cantonese, Romanian, um, French. And then if you see the bottom, all of those other languages in no particular order have less than ten, but are represented in our student population. Including other because that's a choice. So here, uh, we'll start with some of the data. Um, in this information, I was able to pull from um Open Architects, which does a great job of putting together the data and in charts and graphs, so I don't have to figure that out, which I think is great. So this is based on last year's WIDA for Access Score. So that's a test that all English learners take in January, February, every year. It's listening, speaking, reading and writing. For most students, it's online. Um, for kindergarten, it's all in person. First, second, third grade, they do the writing part on paper. Everyone, everything else is online. So last year, we had a hundred and ninety-six students that took the um access test. Um, and our average overall level is a, a level three. So like, it's one to six, one newcomer, six proficient in Eng, five, six is proficient in English. So in the mid-level is where our average is.
Hey Christie, the, the uh one ninety-six being thirty-seven less than the previous school year, is that, is that because we, we couldn't, we, we, we had a capacity issue on testing or did we have less to test?
Less students to test at that time. So that's in January, February, that's how many ELs we had at that time. So there might have been more in the beginning of the year, the end of the year, but that's how many tested. So the year before, there were more kids in January, February.
Okay, so we went up.
But now we're.
Thirty students?
From that point, yes.
Okay, I was, I was trying to get.
There's a lot of fluidity.
Because we're at two twenty-five now and so.
Yeah, there's a lot, the numbers, if I run the numbers tomorrow, we'll be up three from today. It will, plus minus one because someone could move. Um, and then the bottom, it, it shows like first-time participants. So there were sixty-two students who were new um ELs. That includes kindergarten, so they were never tested before. So of course, a hundred percent of those students made progress because it's their first time taking it. Um, and then the hundred and thirty-four students that had taken access before, fifty-four percent made progress. Um, and then attainment means they made the um exit criteria. So that's what attainment means. Ding.
Yep, go ahead. I have a quick question. So do you look at like when they make attainment? So like in terms of schools, like which schools and does, maybe I didn't do enough homework.
We can look at that. I'm not going to look at that this, today.
Yep.
Um, I can talk about it generally. Today, the slides, the next set of slides are about progress.
Okay.
And, but I, I can touch on the attainment. See, we do look at, we look at that. Um, typically, it depends on how many years they've been in school.
Yep.
Right? So if they start as a kindergartner, we're looking at attainment, second, third grade. But if you started as a third grader.
Yep.
Then maybe it's sixth grade, may, like, so it, it varies on when the student started and what their level was when they started.
Got it.
So it's hard to say, we should have attainment at this level because it's, it's fluid from when they started.
Yeah, no, I was curious because it struck me that Warren has such a high number and that could be because they're young. I don't, I'm learning. So um, I was just curious if the number drops because, you know, they're making attainment or if the number drops because I, I don't know. I was just curious.
So I can tell you, kindergarten is our biggest number.
Okay.
Because it's their first time being screened, tested, and they're, they're qualifying. Um, I want to say at kindergarten right now, there are forty-eight students.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And just uh on the made progress for the students that previously were, were tested.
Mm-hmm.
What's, what's the number you're shooting for there? Uh, you know, just and coming in ignorant, fifty-four percent seems like, hey, that, that means forty-six percent didn't make any progress and which would be alarming if I don't have more context.
Exactly. So the, the state determines the, the, the target based on how long they've been in US, US schools, their level, their grade, right? So those three things.
So progress is something that's defined, not just, hey, they, no progress, not being, the forty-six doesn't mean they made no progress. They just haven't.
They didn't hit the benchmark.
Some benchmark of, of progress.
Correct.
Okay.
So let's say like they would get like an overall access score of a three-point-two. And so back it up. So let's say they started at two-point-one and then uh the state says, okay, this student should get a three-point-one next year. If that student gets a three, they, they don't have progress. There was progress, but they didn't hit the target.
Right.
So that's where that number comes in.
And that makes a lot more sense because I'm like, I, I know all the work you're doing. So this.
Correct.
This number of, at, at, just when you read it in layman's terms, it looks.
Absolutely.
Appallingly low, which I, I know is not.
And then so for all those students that don't make that progress target, if you will, they go on a, a student success plan where there are goals and we are measuring um and looking at those students closely to say, okay, what, what do they need to work on? What domain? Is it listening? Is it speaking? Is it reading? Is it writing? But so yeah, there's usually progress and we do look at each student individually to say, okay, were they point one off? Were they further away? Why, why, why aren't they making the progress?
Making the progress. Great, thank you.
Good question, good question. Okay. So this is the data um since twenty-twenty. Um, again, making that progress and thank you for ma- having me clarify that because it would help understand my next set of slides. Um, so in twenty-twenty, fifty-nine percent of the students made the benchmark progress that we were looking for. Twenty-twenty-one, obviously after COVID, there was a dip down to thirty-six. And now we're on the way up and I'm hoping that we will continue to go up with progress and students making um, making progress. We put in some new curriculum and things like that. Ding. So one of the places that I'm really um proud of is up at the high school. Because if you can see the, their dip down was, so last year was about fif- fifteen percent, the year before was sixteen percent and now up thirty-two percent. And I believe that is due to the fact that um in the past couple of years, the high school has created new classes um specific for student levels so that when they go in there, they're getting the curriculum that they need at their level versus having all the students in there and the teachers trying to do lots of things. Additionally, um, they've created a math class and a science class for newcomer or students that haven't been in school before, live students, so students that might have interrupted schooling. And so they're going into high school with maybe a third grade math level because they haven't been in school, right? They, they just weren't in school. And so I think that those, so the pitches that you see there are the new science class that's co-taught with a science teacher and a EL teacher. The math class was um, which was started last year, the year before, um, is co-taught with a EL teacher and a math teacher. And so really targeting instruction for what the kids need to learn English, to access the content, I think is making this difference here. Um, additionally, this year, we've created a bridge support class. So students who are ELs and maybe they're that level four, they're, they're almost ready to exit. So they're in general English classes, but now they have a targeted support class with the EL teacher to help them with some of those nuances of language to, so that they can access that content and, and be successful. And that's going really well this year too. So I'm excited to see what that um produces with attainment.
So Christie, you mentioned like, you, you mentioned the dip with COVID that you saw on here. How has this group been able to rebound? Because I, I got a feeling that it has to be compounded exponentially, right? They're, they experienced curricular COVID like everybody else did and, and created gaps, you know, academically, but they also lost some time and, and, and some progress in this space, which then just puts them even further and it kind of compounds the issue. Uh, how, how, did, am I right in saying that you saw that and, and how have they been responding and, and getting back on track?
Absolutely. And I think it's um, and for some of our, so specifically like a lot of our high school students, a lot of them are newcomers. So they have just arrived to US schools in the past couple of years. And so for many of them, school was completely shut down for COVID and beyond. Like there were, there are families that I've spoken to and school never reopened, like even after COVID. And so creating these courses and having um these spaces for these kids, I think is really, is really helping to build back up and to help close those gaps. Sure.
Is the um fifty percent figure a mark of like the average? Um, is what's expected by the state for, for each, for each city or is it?
So um, not necessarily. And I did compare to state data and forgive me, I don't have it and I don't fully. And I don't fully remember the state, um, data. But I believe, and Mike will fact-check me, but I believe we're doing better than the state average. But I don't know.
Okay.
But that's a good question.
Cause I, I just saw the fifteen percent from the past year and I was like, I was a little confused. Do, do you see, do you see that trend across, across the state or not?
Yeah, he's gonna check for me. Good question though. Yep, dang. And including, so I asked the teachers to send me some pictures and we have an EL student that was inducted into the National Honor Society. Very proud moment. So I'm really excited about the work that's happening up at the high school. All right. And then Ashland Middle School. Again, this is their progress over time. So what the benchmarks were sent for, set for those students. So we see a dip in the number here at forty-two percent. And so one of the things that we're working on is updating the classes as well as the curriculum to try to model what we're doing at the high school, which is working really well. And so that's something that we're working on with new scheduling at the middle school. I think that's going to help us to be able to set up the model at the middle school a little bit differently to, so we can see some more successes there.
Talk a little bit about the, talk a little bit about the sixty-one percent there. And it's kind of an interesting number, given the other trends. And then of course, it's come back down a little bit. Any sense of what was driving that number that year?
You know, I, I looked at this and I tried to look back and I don't know. I can look into it and, and see and get back to you on that, but I'm, do not know.
Well, and, and how many students was that there, right? So a jump of ten percent might just mean that, you know, three students did, did, or two students did, did, did better, right? So that the, these, these are small numbers probably, so just a couple of, a couple of achievements probably skew things greatly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a fair point, but if you also look at the data points, like we're not, we're seeing some improvement like the high school on the last slide. Just an uptick, right? And, you know, a good one in the last year. We're kind of getting back to the twenty-twenty timeframe. Like, you know, they're, they're a little bit below, both middle school and the high school were a few points below where we were. But it says, it suggests some consistency to it. But that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, no, and I'm curious too, cause as you mentioned before, these numbers are very fluid. And so if you have a number of students that move into the middle school halfway through the year who are level one, it, it's may likely change what this looks like. So is there any way to put, put these numbers into context with those numbers, right? In terms of when students move in, what the levels? Cause I would imagine that impacts, I mean, that, that may be a much bigger ask to put that into, all into perspective at the same time. But I would imagine that has an impact on it as well.
It, it has, it has somewhat of an impact. Because again, if they move in and it's their first time taking access, then they have a hundred percent growth. And also, so the kids who have taken it before. One of the things I do see at the middle school is kind of that place where we have long-term English learners. So these are English learners who have been English learners since kindergarten. And sometimes they're still, they can't hit the exit criteria because of maybe a disability, because of a suspected disability. So things like that. And so the middle school is that place where we are definitely trying to figure out a little bit more. And so that's where we're really trying to put in some of the energy.
Yeah.
Because there are definitely students there that have been ELs for a long time. And they're not making progress, possibly for other reasons as well. But we want to then see, okay, well then how can we shift curriculum? How can we shift classes to meet their needs?
So there'll be, I mean, it's, it's, the conversation that we're going to have in the next couple of meetings with regard to the Ashland Middle School's schedule, right? That, that has a tremendous impact and Christie alluded to it. That, you know, making sure that the schedule is appropriate for English learners at the middle school. It needs to be adjusted as well as a defined curriculum, which is what she started to implement. You know, the first tick of the sixty-one percent is a direct relationship for the first year Christie was here.
You might want to stop where you are now, Christie.
Yes, I looked crazy, it was me.
Just wanted to throw that out there.
I think it's fair to say.
Degree higher though.
It's fair to say you had a great deal to do with it.
Correct.
I, I know you, you asked me to fact-check you and unfortunately, I do not have that information at my fingertips as I thought I would. But what I, what I can add to this is we talk about students that are, that are making progress. I think it's more important to talk about students who have at least increased their percentage or increased their score from the previous year. And when I look at that data real quickly, eighty-eight point one percent of our students increased their score from the previous year. So I, we can delve deeper into that data to see where, maybe if that student was new to us or if that student has been with us. But when you look at that, it's pretty impressive. That might be on your slide later on.
No, it's not. We just find that.
So eighty-eight percent though, is a pretty impressive data point to, to talk about in terms of our success.
Right, yeah. Can you tell we love data? I was gonna say, the other thing that would be interesting, just some, at some point in the future is following the cohorts of the students. So like, you, you know, because you're, you have five years here, you're jumping, kids are jumping schools, right? And so how does that look? And is it the grade level or is it the cohort of students? Or, you know, we could just slice this six ways to Sunday because we just love this stuff, so. But this is great, this is really great.
And not to get ahead too far ahead on the other ones, but it looks like the trend is the percentage of progresses defined by the state. Kind of is lower at the, the older the kids get. But is, do you think that's probably due to the curricular demands as well? So, you know, if you're, if you're at kindergarten and whatever, you're kind of doing social, emotional learning, you're doing all this other stuff. You can really make a lot of progress on the English learning. Whereas you're a freshman in high school, you're trying to, you know, a, 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 access that curriculum via English and trying to learn English at the same time.
Correct.
And you're, they're competing, you're having these competing resources in your, you know, in your learning there, right?
Absolutely. And, and in the younger grades, there's more language instruction in general for all children. Yep. And yes, you'll see in my next two slides. Okay, ding. He's giving me a look. All right, so at Mendez. So the, we do see a small, a small dip from last year to this year. However, I did dig into this one a little bit more. And so, and the last time I was here, we, I talked a little bit about Flashlight Three-Sixty, Three-Sixty. Which is a speaking and writing progress monitoring tool. So I, Mendez is really taking Flashlight Three-Sixty and really doing like Flashlight Fridays and the kids are doing more speaking practice. So I looked at the domains specifically and there was, there was an increase in their speaking and writing scores over last year. So that, that gave me a little bit of hope that they were really focusing on that and that improved. This year, they do have new curriculum in all of the, the three, four, five ELD classes. And also they are working closely with the MTSS team to discuss the students that are not making progress. So the, they're, they're working on that. They've met with the reading specialist to discuss every single English learner and have targeted goals for all of those students. So I'm, I'm hoping that the efforts that we're putting in this year will get that number back up at Mendez. Ding. So Warren, as what you alluded to, more of the kids are making progress at Warren. So that's where we have the least number of kids on those student success plans because they didn't make their target. Because it is very much a language-rich environment in general. So they're, they're making good progress. I don't have any notes on them. And they also are adopting new curriculum in the ELD classrooms here. They're using Flashlight Three-Sixty. So their numbers look good.
Does this progress include like the, the various amounts of hundred percents that the students get for baseline, just completing the test for the first time?
Yes, yep. So the kindergartners, it was like forty-eight of them. Well, last year it was smaller. They would be a hundred percent, right? So there's more kids getting a hundred percent at Warren. And so one of the areas, and I talked a little bit about this in speaking about the middle schoolers. We do have that discrepancy between students on IEPs and not on IEPs making progress. So that is one of the areas where, again, we're working with goals and trying to have more communication with the special education staff. To really figure out what we can do differently to meet their needs. One of the EL teachers at Mendez is getting her master's in special education. So she is doing a practicum in the special education class. And reverse, the special education teacher is going to be getting her EL license as well and doing her EL internship at the same time. So that we can really have a programming for duly identified students that have a disability and are ELs. So I spoke, talked about Flashlight Three-Sixty a little bit, you can click on it. So this is that progress monitoring tool that I spoke about. And so the students, don't press play yet. So the students would get a prompt like this. There might be pictures, the teachers can pick whatever prompts they want. It might go with their theme. It might go with the style of writing that they're working on. The student can look at it and they would label the picture. So here, they could type in there or they could do it together. So the student like wrote book, backpack, lunch, school bus. Then if they're doing speaking, they would record themselves speaking and they can do it three times. Or if they're writing, they could write it. And then the teacher can give them feedback. And they can listen to the feedback and give them a goal right in here. And so I put, I picked a recording of a student who is at Mendez. He was, he's been in US schools for three years. And this is his recording, so you can press play, hopefully you can hear it. Can't hear it.
Mac users, something I need to do? Is there something I need to do to hear the?
The speaker button is off.
Yeah, all right, hold on.
No, but the speaker, um, sort of, no, so, so right, on the right-hand side on the bottom, there's a little speaker there that's, I think that's a speaker.
Under the image, yeah.
Right there, yeah.
No, it starts right away.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, yeah, but you're gonna get that back.
It's all about his routine. You know, I was like, I need to find a good one. I listened to three and I got to this one, I was like, that's it. That is it. And so they have benchmarking on that. So they do, they're like the benchmark, speaking and writing in the beginning, middle and end of the year. And then we can track the data and look at that in addition to having the access scores as well. And that's it, questions? Thank you.
Warren approvals?
Between November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four and December eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of six hundred seventy-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. This includes general fund expenses of two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty cents. Revolving expenses of four hundred forty thousand, ninety-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Grant expenses of eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. And meals, tax expenses of eighty-two dollars and sixty cents.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Just briefly, I just want to mention that this weekend, on Saturday, we have our first budget workshop. This will be an, an interesting year. What, what we've done, as you know, we always start the process in the fall for the next year. And this year, we've been meeting individually, so Chris, myself and Mike have been meeting individually with principals as well as directors. Going through their individual budgets first before we bring all the admin team together. It's been helpful to identify truly what the needs are individually before we, we meet as a full admin team. So Saturday will be our first meeting with the school committee. And I just want to preface it by saying, it'll be unlike any of the other meetings we've had in the years past. Partly because it won't be about making decisions at this point in time. It's really to give an overview of, of where we are in the process. And I, I want to caution folks that when we look at the initial budget, it, it's always scary. I think the admin team looks immediately, because I have doom and gloom always. But we, we eventually get through the, the, every iteration with a, a budget that's appropriate and it moves our district forward. And that will be the same. And we've got a lot of moving parts this year with scheduling adjustments at the middle school. For FY twenty-six, looking at our special education population, our out-of-district population. The use of the one-time funds that we utilized last year, how does that impact us moving forward? And, and, you know, that's, that's something that's, that's important to understand. Next Friday, obviously is the beginning of, of the December break. And a lot of spirit week oppor- opportunities in all the schools. And it's kind of a fun week in, in terms of, you know, the, the different days. Mike and I are used to it now and Aaron has them every Friday at the middle school, which is kind of fun. Yeah, it's, it's, it's definitely a different vibe there right now and, and it feels great. So that's about it, that's all I have.
Is it from what time and where on Saturday?
Yeah, uh, what time do you want to be, no. I, it, it's posted for eight and it should be from eight to twelve at, at the David Mendez School, but in the music room where we had it last year, yeah. And, and I fully anticipate at least three meetings this year. I really do, based on where we are currently, so. And thank you to Chris, I sent him an email today, just saying, I apologize for, I have always this stream of thoughts through my head with the budget. And I'm constantly just shooting, instead of writing one email with fifteen things, I write fifteen emails with one thing. It's just, it hits me and I'm like, I gotta remember to get this to Chris. But the, the amount of time he puts in and listening to me is, you know, I feel sorry for him.
Chris, if you want to give us feedback for his evaluation.
Right, yeah. Thanks.
Thanks Jim, Mike.
Last week, I was able to attend a really fabulous conference, the CASE Conference. It's an annual conference for Title I leaders across the state. And this year, I was able to bring Christie with me as well as Assistant Principals Erica Lenaris and Kate Altman. Good opportunity to hear about how we can best serve our Title I population with terms of interventions. And we've got a lot of it. Most importantly, it was a great time for the three of us to get together to collaborate as well. So it was good discussion between us and how we can better serve our, our students who have severe needs, but aren't necessarily our special education students. But a lot of these students are English learners, so it was great for Christie to be able to be there as well. We had a science curriculum leadership team meeting yesterday and it was, it seemed like a perfect segue from Christie. Because one of the things that we're really digging deeply into this year in all of our curriculum leadership teams is to the, is, is in particular the EL data around MCAS. And we took some time to sort of dig deep into what specific areas our students are struggling the most in. But one of the things that was, was a proud moment was to listen to Kelly and Colin Sherman. But one of the things that was, was a proud moment was to listen to Kelly and Colin Sherman talk about the success of the current programming that's happening, the new class that's been developed for, uh, our English learners specifically in the area of science, those two co- taught classes. And seeing, um, a breakdown of our students and their successes right now in those classes, first term, was, was pretty impressive. So we're proud of the work that's being done right now. And we're going to have some real-time data to be able to track how those students are doing uh, as opposed to how they did last year without those supports. So it'll be nice to be able to, to look at that regularly. Um, data team meetings are continuing. Uh, I feel like I said that every week when we, when we meet, but those are happening on a regular basis. And, uh, we had our second educator evaluation, uh, committee meeting today, uh, which had a spirited discussion. Uh, we are, we are looking at our current rubrics and the rubric that we utilize to, to, um, assess teachers' performance and, uh, for the state in terms of our evaluation process. Uh, we are taking a good hard look at the two thousand twenty-four model rubric that was provided by the state. We're comparing what we're currently using with the two thousand twenty-four model. Um, and we're gonna, we're going to work hard to make some probably substantial changes to our current rubric. Uh, but it's, it's, it's a really collaborative conversation between district leadership as well as our, our teachers. And I was, I just left the meeting today excited about what we're going to be doing uh, because the conversation was pretty rich. Um, other than that, our, our students hit in the fact that we did have our first major district-wide Alice drill in terms of our safety committee procedures and protocols. Uh, it was a barricade drill. Uh, we tested it across the entire district. Uh, while I, I was reported that some of our high school students didn't take it as seriously as we wanted to, I can say that every other school certainly did. And the message was sent to our high school students who didn't take it seriously that this has to be something that, that we take seriously. Our, our, but overall, our, our population did a fantastic job. All of our rooms were safely barricaded. Uh, and the police and fire department, uh, collaborated with us to do it efficiently and effectively. And I can say that the drills, for the most part, um, took under ten minutes. So it was really a, a minimal disruption to our day. Teachers and students were able to move on right afterwards. And, uh, you know, Chris joined me for many of the schools to walk around and it was, it was really an effective drill.
Excellent.
I'm gonna put Chris on the spot. Uh, just, uh, when Mike was talking about the educator evaluation, um, conversations, as, as you remember, as we started negotiating contracts last year, uh, with the AEA, um, you know, we had formed a couple of subcommittees and, and Chris has been leading the charge, uh, with regard to our student activity, um, stipends, et cetera. And it just, really high level, Chris, just give a brief overview of, of, you know, number of meetings you've had and, and the work you're, you're undertaking with, uh, the union leadership.
Yeah, so, so we've been progressing. Uh, we met, uh, I met this afternoon, um, which was my third meeting. We've had one side meeting prior, you know, outside of the larger groups. So essentially four meetings. And, um, you know, I think at this point, within the next, you know, I'd say eight weeks, we should be in a position where, you know, we can have some kind of recommendation hopefully to, to Jim. And I say eight weeks because, you know, the, obviously, holiday breaks coming up and everything like that, so the, you know. But I, I think, uh, we're, we're at a good point, um, and, you know, I'm, right now, I'm pretty satisfied with the, how the discussions are going. I don't know if that provided enough clarity on it.
No, it did. Thank you. Yeah, it, it's important to understand that, you know, I've sort of been pushing Chris on this as, and he has been pushing the leadership, uh, because these are, um, monetary implications for our current budget for FY twenty-six, uh, as well. I said, listen, if you want to slow it down and, and not really worry about it, we can push it to twenty-seven. I'm good with that. But, um, prefer, we have not adjusted stipends, um, in terms of looking at the, the ratios and the amount of time and what they look like in my sixteen years. So it, it's, it's time that we, um, really focus on that. And, uh, and thank you to Chris for doing that and keeping an eye on how it impacts us, uh, from a fiscal perspective as well.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Jim. Okay, we're moving on to the action items, discussion updates, votes, and we've got, uh, Ms. Calvo. Hello? Thank you for being here. We've exchanged some emails and I know you've been in touch with Mr. Adams.
Yes. I just want to introduce Solera. Cody's my vice chair.
Hello.
And Steve is on the board. And we have two Ashland residents, Molly Judge and Kelly Jasti, who are friends of the school as well here.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So do you want me to just give a quick?
Yeah, why don't you just, because I, I know we've been in touch, but I don't know that, I think everybody else needs you to start at the beginning.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. So Natalie Calvo, I'm the chair of the Board of Chesterton Academy of the Immaculata. We're a new school in the works to open in the fall, this coming fall. And we're requesting approval to operate as a private school, high school, in the jurisdiction of Ashland. We are a member of the Chesterton School Network, which provides a rigorous classical curriculum taught through the lens of the Catholic faith. There are currently over sixty Chesterton schools in the country. The closest one is in Rhode Island. And our curriculum is laid out in the course catalog that I included with our application that meets and exceeds state curriculum framework. All teachers are required to hold at least a bachelor's degree in education or the subject area they are teaching or related field. Many will have an advanced degree. The school has provisional accreditation status from the Chesterton School Network and will be eligible for full accreditation in the spring of year three. Our facility will be the Saint Cecilia Family Center located at forty-eight S T Street in Ashland. It includes six classrooms, which are currently used for religious education on Sunday and afternoons, and a large hall. And we are working closely with the local authorities to ensure compliance with state health, safety and fire regulations, including unnecessary inspections and certifications. We will comply with all state recording, reporting requirements and record-keeping practices. And we believe that Chesterton Academy of the Immaculata will be a valuable education option for families in Metro West Boston and respectfully request the school committee's approval to operate as a private school in Ashland. And please, if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Because I, I know we've done this before.
Yeah, yeah, just for a frame of reference.
That was gonna be mine, ask Jim to give some background. Natalie reached out to me.
Right.
And there is a process that's outlined by the state. Um, and part of that process was Jim, um, reviewing the curriculum. And, and you can take it from there.
Sure. Uh, so, School Committee Policy, LBC, talks about school relations, um, with non-public schools. And Mass General Law is very specific, uh, with regard to the, the role that we play. Um, and there, there can be no undue denial of a school if they meet requirements that we would have internally as well for Ashland High School, for instance. Uh, that means graduation requirements, um, the, the amount of school, the types of classes they teach, ensuring it's a safe environment, following policies of, you know, whether it's hazing, whatever. And, and Mike and I both have reviewed, uh, the package and it meets all requirements. Um, the last time we did this, I think, was twenty fifteen, uh, when there was a hockey school, uh, that was looking at, at Warren Conference Center, uh, where they were drawing folks not necessarily from Ashland, but, uh, they wanted to set up a school inside of, of the town proper. And therefore, you know, we did approve it then as well. They met all the requirements, same here. Um, so I have no concerns with, with having the board approve that. So we have to then send a letter back to the state saying, uh, we've approved it, so. But we cannot deny if they've met all the requirements, which they have, so.
Essentially, we're just acting as the local administrator of both the state and any, uh, local requirements. That's all.
Right. I mean, certainly if you have questions that you're curious about, like which communities around us, for instance, are, will you be drawing students from?
Um, yes, so Framingham, Natick, um, Marlborough even, there, there's at least one applicant from Ashland. Um, so surrounding Metro West, since Marion High School closed.
Right.
There really isn't a Catholic coed option in the area, so.
So Jim, I guess my only procedural question at all is, um, you know, I've certainly heard your, your sta- statements of what you're working on, right, that you need to get approvals from other places. We're okay going ahead with the approval from our end. Now just look at the curricular thing, understanding that there's some health, as an example, right? Safety, uh, health, safety, safety regulations, um, that they've got to make sure they comply with before they operate. But we don't have to hold up our approval for that.
Correct. Right.
And, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and I'm assuming that you have whatever rental agreements or property agreements with Saint Cecilia so that you know that you have permanent use of that space?
Right, we're in negotiation with them. And part of that process was to get approval from you guys.
And, and, you know, so the last one we did, uh, like I said, was the, uh, the hockey school, uh, and they were at the Warren Conference Center. So being in a, in, in this location and operating in a high school, are there other, either, uh, Ashland, uh, resources, uh, that you need? Uh, because I got the Warren Conference, uh, lots of, lots of space to, you know, uh, go outside and have, you know, P E, do, do, do different things where Saint Cecilia's is pretty compact and, and there's not fields, there's not other things. And so are there other resources in Ashland that you'd be looking to use? I, I think about, yeah, field, field scheduling, Stone Park and, and, and all that and how that would jive with, uh, the other youth, uh, sports and different activities in, in town.
Yeah, so the field closed to Saint Cecilia's, as long as it's not being used during the, the school hours, we, we would love to be able to have the students walk over there, um, knowing that, you know, it'd be reserved, obviously, for athletics, for your programming.
Yeah, I don't know that that's something we have to get into at that point.
No, no, it was more, it was more just a, uh, curiosity. And how, how is that, how does that work in this? And if you haven't thought about it, then there's, there are the scheduling of, fields are tight in general.
Right. I would imagine, I mean, I, I don't know that this, that this is the answer, but I would imagine they would go through the same process as anybody else outside of the district that wanted to use the, uh, the school property.
Correct.
You know, what, just in compliance with our policies about, we, we rent certain fields and so forth and so on.
Well, if, um, Mr. Adams and Mr. Tyre are both satisfied that they meet the statutory requirements, I'd move to approve the petition to operate the private school as presented.
Second?
All in favor? Marcy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
If I just could take a moment since we have this, you guys are all set.
Yeah.
This, this came up, but, because, you know, I'm counsel to some school districts and, um, I was getting questions from a particular one about a private school application that was presented to them.
Yeah.
And one of the things that appears to be the case, I don't remember the dates on this, but it looks like D E C has put out some further guidance and, and set of details and things that, that we should be looking at.
Yeah, I think we accessed that.
Yeah, that's what I included within the letter. That's the file. That came directly from D E C.
So, yeah, I appreciate that there was a lot of that, the data was in there. Um, what I was just gonna suggest is if, if we haven't looked at our policy, the LBC,
Yep.
to, for inclusion of that, it's right now and we don't have one in front of us.
Yep.
Great opportunity so that five years from now, when there's somebody else that comes forward,
Great idea.
you know, that we kind of make sure our policy's aligned.
Sure.
Um, rather than saying, oh, well, we should do it differently.
I was gonna put it on the, uh, put it on.
Attitude is twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
Yeah, right.
Right, you guys, you guys are all set. You don't feel, it's, it's, for the next, the next contestant's, uh, question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, good luck.
Yeah, I just, the reason I flag it is because it had become an issue for that particular client.
Yeah.
The issue was people started looking at what D E C had out there. It went beyond what their policies were.
Yeah.
There were, I don't remember if there was opposition to it or not, it was just details that people were getting in the weeds of. But they were trying to reconcile what they had as a very thin policy that just mirrored the statute, which was like that. And then they're trying, and like I said, let's not get into a position of telling people no because we're putting up road, what appeared to be putting up roadblocks at the wrong time.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's why I wanted to flag it when I saw this on the agenda and just suggest that at the policies up committee level, um, whenever it suits your needs, it might be worth looking at.
No, that's, that makes a lot of sense. Speaking of policies, um, we have been talking about some.
Set that up for that reason alone.
Yes, exactly. Um, and, and we had the first read of, of the next group that's coming up. So we'll go through them, but, uh, unless there are any issues, hopefully we should be able to move through this pretty quickly. The first is the athletic concussion regulations. Does anybody have anything to add or take away from that after our last discussion?
And again, I just want to reiterate, this is, this comes directly from the nurses. Uh, it was their work, uh, in addition to reviewing it with attorneys, but also, uh, M I A A as well as, um, you know, local, um, organizations, hospitals, et cetera, so.
Right. And then we looked at all these things at, um, Policy Subcommittee before we even came here and got some clarification bef- before they even came here, so.
So I will move to approve policy J J I F dash R, Athletic Concussion Regulations as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is the vision, vision and mission statement. It's just that we need to remember to change it and up every year, make sure that that's still, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, we just hadn't updated it.
Right.
And it, it's, it was significant, so we, we want to make sure.
We want to make sure our policy manual contains the, the most updated version of it. So it is something that we should.
I move to approve policy E D, Vision and Mission Statement as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, you'll remember the face coverings, that was changed just based on the relevance.
That's.
Just a removal.
The removal, right.
We're rescinding that.
Rescinding it, yep.
Yeah.
So I move to rescind policy E B C F A, Face Coverings.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then purchasing, DJ, purchasing?
Yeah, again, um, while it's, it's really one, uh, two words that were changed within the policy. It just, under, uh, M A S C updated their policy in twenty twenty-three. Uh, we have not, had not updated it and there's literally a change to read the agent versus they will develop. And we're just adopt, adopting M A S C's language. That's all it is.
Anybody else want to turn?
To make the motion?
Keep it simple.
Come on.
Give your progression.
Sorry, fair enough, fair enough. I move to approve policy D J, Purchasing as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first read of policies, uh, we won't be voting, but we'll be discussing D J A, Purchasing Authority.
So these were all, like, wrote in minor things.
Yeah.
You can't.
Yeah, well, again, I think what we've talked about, Paul, and Laurie, uh, refresh my mi- memory, when we had the policy subcommittee meeting, um, you know, there's language such as in this one. It says contracts may be entered into for a period up to three years. Do we want, you know, in a couple of the other policies, do we want to stay consistent with what M A S C is saying? Or do we want to enact how we feel versus, you know, going with this language?
Yeah, I understand that.
That's all.
Just these are, this is first reads. I thought the changes were small if we could just approve, but.
Uh, well, well, that's fine. I, I just, I, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and, and, and I, I agree, although we put it in first read, so I would probably just follow through that this time.
Yep. So there was really nothing major except for contracts maybe entered into. Remember that law changed a couple of years ago where they're going to purchasing and procurement stuff.
Right.
Yeah, this, this also, didn't somebody raise this concern? Forgot what it was and it wasn't a real issue, but it touched on this kind of thing.
So it had to do with, uh, when we were renting the, um, maintenance facility.
Right.
Uh, and as long as the lease was less than three years and not, not three with an option and take the option in the first year, which made it four years.
Right.
Uh, it's, and that's what it was. Yeah.
Right.
And, and this, uh, is a straight adoption of their current one.
That's right. Yep. So that's that. And then bidding requirements, uh, D J E, uh, certainly more significant changes, um, as recommended by M A S C. So, um, based on, um, chapter one ninety-eight of Acts of twenty twenty-two. We just, our last time we looked at the policy was twenty seventeen.
Just, uh, in the, uh, agenda, the links for some of these are in somebody's trash?
So, so I adjusted that today.
Yeah.
Uh, because when you copy, it's interesting with Google Docs, I, you can, you can make a copy, but it actually, and place it in the folder. What it doesn't do, and I didn't notice that until today, it doesn't take the red line or the green line in this instance, the green line version. It actually makes a copy, literally a copy, but no strike throughs.
Right.
So I went back today. So if you go back to the agenda now, uh, it should link.
No, no, I'm in, I'm on the agenda right now.
Doesn't.
Yeah, it says it's in somebody's trash.
You can take it out of the trash and look at it.
Okay.
It's in the folder.
Either way, it's in the folder as red line. I, I adjusted that, not copy of red line. So I apologize. So I'll make sure, I, I didn't notice it until I went to review them today.
Mm-hmm.
So, but that's what it was, Paul. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I, I have the folder up too.
Yeah, yeah, the folder's there with the red line.
I'm just gonna click on it here and then it, and it's always in somebody's trash.
I added the red line, but I forgot to do the links. That's what I did, so.
Okay.
Take a hit for that one. B H E, which is Use of Electronic Messaging by School Committee Members. Uh, again, they just strike per M A S C in twenty twenty-three, the last, uh, part of the, um, the fourth paragraph.
So as long as nobody has any comments or questions, we will, we will vote on them at, at our next meeting.
Yep.
And then, and next up, we have the Consent Agenda. Just looking for a motion to.
So I, I would make a motion. I'm not sure if I can do it this way. The, Paul drew on this to my attention once he's just sat down here, that in the grant approval document.
Yep.
And, and on the hockey program issue, you've got it up here, Paul. There's reference to it as a cash gift.
As a, as a cash.
Yeah, it, it's, it's not.
So, so I think just from a consent agenda perspective, I wouldn't make a motion to approve the consent agenda because that's a problem.
Yeah.
Because, because it says funds to purchase.
Right. So why don't we, uh, I guess I would suggest nobody make a motion to approve the consent. Right. So why don't we, uh, I guess I would suggest nobody make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And we'll just go through the items one by one. Okay. So let's, uh, gifts and donations.
So.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, and so we can pull it out and we can say, you know, with that, if, if there's verbiage that Jim has for that, we can, we can.
We can adjust the verbiage.
We can adjust the verbiage and, and approve it as amended, right?
Yeah, yes.
He's changing it.
I'm just changing it now.
The whole idea of consent agenda is either take it as it is or you don't, right?
Right, right, yeah. Pull it out and then do.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Change it on the fly. Love computers.
It's, it's, it's donation of jerseys, hockey jerseys for the girls hockey program. That's all it is.
Okay.
All right. Well, then I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
As amended.
As amended, I guess. Yeah, there you go.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Thank you.
That was easier, wasn't it?
All right. Reports. Abashak, you have anything else you want to share? Well, you didn't get to share with the students.
No, so I had a junior seminar actually, so, oh, sorry. I had a junior seminar actually when they were preparing, um, their, their remarks on today's meeting, so, um, I mean, they talked about it as well, so I think they hit most of our bases, so nothing for me.
Excellent. Thanks.
Middle School Site Council's tomorrow, so I'll get you next time.
And, and I want to say thank you to Erin. She moved up a couple of the meetings, um, partly because, again, there, the conversations with regard to national middle school schedule itself, right? So I, I, I mentioned here at the last time, I think there's a, there's an order of how we should be doing business, if you will, uh, in terms of the conversations with faculty and staff, which will occur tomorrow as well. Uh, individual conversations on how things might impact folks as well, uh, have, have occurred already. But then an entire faculty and then site council, because again, if you look at the site council roles and responsibilities, it really has a lot to do with, from a budgetary standpoint and, and conversations within each school. So, um, before she comes to us on Saturday, it's just sort of a, um, I wanted those conversations to start.
Tina?
So, um, last week there was an ASHPAC meeting, um, uh, you know, the discuss, you know, there were some questions about if we had started budget discussions yet, which of course we haven't, so I told them I'd have more to update, um, on the future. Um, one of the things that parents brought up and asked me to kind of, you know, kind of continue to have the conversation with the committee, um, was around the Community Service Day at the high school, um, that happened in the fall. Um, there was, there were a couple of parents there who were concerned about the fact that they felt that their kids, um, were, uh, they did not use the word excluded, but I can't think of another word to use right now because there, some of the kids and their, their, their students that they were speaking about who were in sub-separate programs, um, either didn't go to school that day because their teachers weren't gonna be there and it was a little too disruptive for them, for their schedules, so they felt as if they missed out on a day of school. Um, other students, uh, were not able to get their, their choice of volunteer opportunities and without kind of having one that they felt as if they connected to. It didn't feel like a meaningful experience and so that student ended up staying home as well too. And so we talked about it with Brittany and Brittany has, you know, some thoughts and ideas of how to potentially change things next year to, to, to really focus on opportunities for students in that classroom. Um, and, you know, to make either a, a community event and an outing potentially in conjunction with the, um, with the post-secondary program or, you know, be able to kind of better tailor opportunities for them. But, you know, she did acknowledge that, you know, for some students it, it ended up being a missed day. Um, and so it's kind of an ongoing discussion, but one that, you know, there, there were a few parents that continued to be concerned and wanted to know that it's, it's a part of the conversation, which Brittany assured them that it is. Um, yeah. Um, and then this past Friday, the, um, Ashland High School Band did their holiday music concert in the Ashland Music Association. In conjunction with it, for the first time, did their first annual, hopefully. Um, they called it a winter fair. So it was, you know, there were craft activities and games for the kids and pizza and hot cocoa and baked sail and, you know, lots of fun stuff. So there were, I, I don't know the total number of people, but it was close to three hundred, um, that came, which was a really great community, um, showing. And everybody seemed to, to have a good time. And, um, so that was a fun event that I was able to attend. Uh, and I think that's it since our last meeting.
Awesome.
Uh, not a lot. I did actually end up, uh, going to the Harlem Wizards, uh, uh, event, the Make-A-Wish event. That was, you know, real, really fun. It was great to see the, uh, Noah and his team out there for, for halftime and, and getting to play out there on the court and get cheered on. It was, uh, it was a pretty cool event and, uh, yeah, I think that's gonna enable them to do two Wishes this year, which is, you know, pretty amazing, so.
Um, so it just came from a high school site, site council for this meeting. Um, they picked up, the biggest point of discussion was picking up the discussion around weighted grades. And, uh, one of the foreign language, sorry, world language teachers, um, came in and talked a lot about concerns about weighted grading and trying to go to more proficiency-based class structures. Um, and so the, I guess the world language department would like to do is, is move to sort of structuring their classes around proficiency rather than Spanish one, two, three, four kind of thing. So there, there's a lot of conversation about that. Obviously, no decisions. They're gonna talk to some other schools that have recently or more recently gone away from weighted grading like we have. I would say interestingly, perhaps not surprisingly, that most of the adults around the room were more away from weighted grading and the kids were the ones who were being competitive about it. Ms. Shields shared an interesting comment too. She said, you know, when people came to talk to her five years ago, six years ago, three years ago, and were concerned about stress related to grades, it was the pressure that parents were putting on the kids. But now it's the kids competing with the other kids, um, around grades. So there's, there's some good discussion. Um, like I said, the next step is to sort of examine what Hall, I think the districts were Holliston, Needham, and maybe Wayland was the third, that have all kind of done this work recently. I don't think Kelly is anticipating it to be a recommendation that they're looking to implement for next year at all. It's still, it's still somewhat in its infancy. Um, but good conversation is going on there, so.
Just a question on, uh, I know we have just talked a little bit about it. We've talked a lot about how colleges approach things and stuff like that. But, uh, are we also, are, as, are other groups like National Honor Society and other, other groups that do also need to potentially modify their things, are, are they involved in the conversation such that, you know, any decision we don't, we're, we're not missing somebody that does look at it in a certain way today that would need to look at it a different way if we did make any changes?
I, I, I would say that I think to some degree, I'm, I'm surmising, cause it was, it's a, it's a really good question and it didn't come up in today's conversation, it may have come up last year and I don't recall it. There are multiple administrators in the room, right, as well as faculty representatives. So there's Ms. Kerr, both deans are in the room. Um, Ms. Pavel Shields is in the room. Um, two faculty representatives, Miss Egan and Miss Trumey are in the room. Um, Ms. Galant is in the room.
She's the energy just, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. When I was on high school site, site council, she was always in the room.
She is always there.
Yeah, and I choose that one, but I'm assuming there's probably.
Yeah, there are others. But for the most part, that's the one that impacts GPA with regard to admitted, beginning to, just getting the off, offer, yeah.
There, there are actually discussions, sorry, I'll just, um, there's some discussion actually about sort of tracking both weighted and non-weighted and then thinking about, you, trying to come up with like a study period over four years, five years, whatever, to see what happens with kids who choose one pathway or the other, how that implements, but.
And most of the clubs that, I, I mean, I don't know of many clubs that actually take GPA into, into account. But I know of NHS and Academic Decathlon, which I'm both a part of. And Academic Decathlon just counts it completely separately. It doesn't even take into account the Ashland GPA system because it's more of a national kind of thing.
They have their own guidelines, right.
Yeah, exactly. So if it's.
And that's what you find out with some of the colleges too. They don't take.
So most colleges just recalculate your GPA anyways based on your course rigors.
And that's, that has come up multiple times in this conversation. Um, there apparently had been a recent conversation with some of the guidance staff, including Mr. McGann, who's here tonight. And I think Mr. McGann still has this sort of secondary business he does in terms of college counseling for non-Ashland students. Um, sort of like a private college counselor. Um, you know, and I, I think his voice weighs heavily on this point and it's that colleges are used to looking at, you know, transcripts from eleven thousand different schools. If you've done the big schools, right, and they've got their own way of looking at that and sorting through that and, um, and the weight seems to be more on are kids taking challenging classes? Are you taking honors level, AP level? Um, and pushing yourself a little bit more than sort of how well you do in those. Um, seems to be the, the prevailing thought, you know? But anyway, I, I will get into the weeds of the conversation, cause it's gonna be a while, but, um, just the conversation's continuing.
Um, I also went to the Harlem Wizards. I worked the front desk and I helped count the money at the end, which was very fun. And, uh, it was really nice to see, uh, how it's gonna impact Make-A-Wish. And it was fun. It was a fun night and it was fun for me to see all the kids ha, there having a good time with their families. Um, and also attended the, um, Warren Site Council and what's going on there. Uh, it was our first meeting of the year, so Pete was just getting us up to speed on what's happening in the building. Um, some interesting conversation about how they're approaching, like some data collection, um, about like getting to know different things about each student and, and along the lines of what we had talked about, um, you know, having a plan for each kid. I mean, they're not, they're not, no one's to that level yet, but in the motion of trying, how do we go about this and what kinds of things can we find out about kids? And there are a couple of teachers who are, um, experimenting with this program and adding data and getting together and having meetings. Um, so that was a really interesting conversation. Yeah.
No, the only, if you're done, I, the only thing I wanted to, uh, mention in Tina, in a jar of memory, and I turned to Mike. Right before, um, Thanksgiving on Wednesday, uh, or was it Tuesday, I guess it was, of, of Thanksgiving week, uh, the launch program provided lunch. Uh, so, um, me and Mike and a couple of other staff members, um, were over, yeah, in the launch room.
That's awesome.
It was awesome. It was, they did such a great job and we had a fun time, you know, um, breaking bread with, with the students.
Yeah, I actually did not hear that piece, but I did hear about the food drive that they did, which was very successful. Very excited about that.
Also, um, budding entrepreneurs, because they have just started a holiday gift wrapping business.
Oh, fabulous. Sign me up.
Teachers and staff, so I'm sure if you are interested in having some of your holiday gifts wrapped by our, by our amazing launch students.
What a great idea.
We are doing it and the price is right, I will tell you that. So, um, if you're interested, maybe let's, no, no, I'll, I'll see what I can do for you.
Seriously?
Yeah.
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 I'll be in touch. I hate wrapping.
That's awesome.
Okay, well, I'm going to move to enter into executive session under MGL Chapter thirty-eight, twenty-one A to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Superintendent Jim Adams, or to conduct collective bargaining with the intent of not returning into public session, and I will take the roll call. Marcy?
Would you like a second first?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Second.
Okay. Second first, first second? All right. We, I've been seconded, so now I can see if you all, um, are on board with what we're about to do. Marcy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Good night, everybody. Thanks.
Good night.